Good evening and welcome to the City of North Las Vegas Council Meeting this evening. I have lost my glasses.
Oh, no, no.
Here.
Just kidding, these are terrible. You can try them.
Let me see here real quick. We'll never get anywhere with that. Could you ask Lori if she could just run my glasses? Oh, let me see what Pam's got here. Oh, these are perfect. The North Las Vegas City Council, we have to do this officially for the record here. North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you at City Council Meeting this evening. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which are located on the table outside the main entrance where you entered or to the left of me at the podium rail. Please give the card to the city clerk, she sits right here, hands in the air for you. When I call upon you, we request that you limit your comments to more than three minutes and we avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the matter of open meeting law?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you, wonderful. Tonight, we have the opportunity to have the invocation given by Reverend Lucius Bowen of the Victory Missionary Baptist Church. I've already welcomed him to our community, I mean to our City Council Meeting today, and I love what he's able to do in our community for our wonderful residents. Following that, we will have the Presidential Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Churchill. Please rise.
Let us pray. Eternal God, we are so grateful to you for your reign, your rule over all creation. We're so grateful for you for this great nation, and more importantly, Lord God, tonight, we ask that you invoke your Holy Spirit over this great city and this City Council Meeting. We give you glory, we give you honor, and we give you praise. Be with us now and forevermore, in Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Today, we have a presentation. Are we going down front for this presentation, Pam? Okay, we're gonna go down front. There was a Black History Month Poetry Contest, so we'll go down and, oh.
I wanted to say a couple of words, Mayor, before you come down, if that's all right?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Rebecca Gibson, Chief of Staff, for the record. In honor of Black History Month, the city hosted a video poetry contest for residents of North Las Vegas. Submissions were received between January 24th and February 7th. We received some very, very creative videos from our residents that will be shared on the city's social media throughout the rest of this month. Our second and third place winners have been contacted and will be receiving gift cards for their participation and for their winning entries. I want to congratulate our second place winner of a $25 gift card, Mr. Alan James, and our third place winner of a $15 gift card, Ms. Gwen Walker. Today, we will be congratulating our first place winner, Snuma student Alexandria Parag, who is here tonight with her mother. Let's take a look at her video.
My name is Alexandria, and today I wrote a poem about Black History Month. I have a dream, a dream our black people sacrificed their lives, their time, their selves, just to let us have a great humanity, to let us black, us white, us mixed people to live our lives to the fullest, to change the wrong to the right, to change our lives and make us live in peace and harmony, to live our lives and make one, to fulfill Martin Luther King's.
Is it just me, or can anybody hear this?
Yeah, I think.
Is there nothing on our end?
Mayor, whoa, that's loud, but that's not. It's up as high as it goes, which is probably why my mic went so loud.
What's that?
It is up as high as it goes.
Sorry about that.
We'll make sure we fix that so we can have it.
Yeah, this is the first time I think we've used this.
It is, yes, sir.
And I'll make sure each of you receives it personally in your emails as well. Council, if you would like to go ahead and come down, and we will ask Alexandria and her mother, Ms. Kellier, to the podium to receive her prize of a $50 gift card to Target and hear remarks from the council. Alexandria?
Alexandria, we are so proud of you, and we know you are a rock star because you are one of our Snuma Pumas. I want to thank you for all the hard work and the effort that you put into submitting your poem, and just know that it warms my heart that you even took the effort to do that. That speaks volumes, and I hope along the way that you learned a lot about you and who you are in your culture. So I'm going to present this Certificate of Achievement to you, and it reads Alexandria Parque.
Paro.
Paro, okay. For winning first place in the Black History Month Poetry Contest, theme: What does Black history mean to you? Congratulations for voicing such an inspirational poem about equality and justice for all. Congratulations.
Words are powerful and they have meaning, and when you have a gift like yours, put those words together to share a message of great meaning to you and to influence others in a positive way, that's a wonderful thing. So thank you for sharing your gift of words with us.
You're welcome.
I guess I'll go next. Actually, I'm still a high school teacher, and so, you know, over at Rancho High School, we have a pretty good art program. As you could see on the outside walls that came in, for us, we really value art, and we're trying to grow our art program. What's so special about art? Art is what makes life worth living. I think you guys would all agree with that. What you've done is you've followed the steps of other poets. You've actually literally added to the body of work that we call humanity. I wrote something like that, and it looked hardly wrote, and just wanted to add the whole world to know. Thank you very much for speaking up for our community and for adding to our humanity.
I've been around long enough to know that I just can't follow Councilman Barone, so I'm not even gonna try, but, you know, I was very impressed, and I loved that shirt you had on. I should have wore the little kitty shirt again, but, you know, we appreciate, I appreciate you doing what you did. I enjoy seeing young people, young boys, young ladies like yourself, get up there and speak and be part of the community. I have two granddaughters and a daughter, and even my little doggie at home is a girl. So I'm very happy to see our young ladies speak up and be part of the community, and hope that you make a difference in the future, which I know you will. Thank you.
And I was just, I recognized talent when I saw you before I knew you were here for this event. I said, hey, I think you could be a good mayor someday, you know? So we see a bright future in these young people running in our cities someday, so keep up, keep pushing, keep striving, but you have big time to study and keep producing those poems, okay? Thank you very much, sweetheart.
And Mayor and Council, just in closing, I wanted to thank all those that participated in the poetry contest, and also just want to thank the panel of judges who helped in this effort. Public Works Director Tom Brady, IT Director Dennis Moriarty, Senior Deputy City Attorney Marissa Rodriguez, and Public Information Officer Patrick Walker. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you, Rebecca. Nice job. We're gonna move on to council items now. Councilman Barone?
Thank you very much, Mayor. It always warms my heart to see young artists, and we're gonna have to have yet another art show, I think, to showcase our young artists. Not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before last, there was a caravan to honor the victims of the tragic accident that we had here on our roads, primarily for the secretary's family, but also wanted to remind everybody that there is a survivor out there. She's recovering, she's making progress, named Miss Tiffany May, who, I didn't realize, she's actually one of my friends from the community, and I didn't realize it was that Tiffany who was involved, but a shout out to her as she recovers. But when I talked to the family, they wanted me to make sure to thank our North Las Vegas Police Department, in particular Lieutenant Cannon and his traffic cop crew that provided safety for the caravan, and of course, you know, I see the chief is out there as well. The fire crew that actually responded to the scene, they were there on hand as well, and they definitely wanted me to extend their thanks for having, quite frankly, a very touching event. I know that, I think the Councilman Churchill might respond to this one as well, or my colleague, Councilwoman Brown. I know I attended the North Las Vegas Elks First Responders Appreciation Dinner. I'll let her talk more about it, though, but I want to let you guys know I actually joined the Elks. Well, I guess I'm pending going and getting, you know, the whole initiation. I don't know if they're gonna blindfold me and make me like walk a plank or anything like that, but I'm joining the Elks Club, and yeah, I suppose I could do that. I actually, when I was in there, I saw actually the pantheon of members who were there, and many of them are actually longtime, very well-known North Las Vegas residents, so I feel like I'm just following the footsteps of other great North Las Vegans. Lunch and Learn, for the public to know, I'm very happy that the city, we have decided to reach out and do some work, some partnering work with the Clark County School District. So Councilwoman Gornes-Brown and I, we organized the first one for the principals of schools of Ward 1, 1 and 2. That was last Thursday. We had fantastic turnout, and we look forward to doing what we can to help out the students and the families here, joining forces, the city and the Clark County School District. You know, last Thursday was fantastic because we also had the unveiling of the Graffiti Park. Well, Graffiti Park LLC, they did a mural that wrapped around the entire Neighborhood Recreation Center. I want to thank our staff at the Neighborhood Recreation Center, if they're listening, right, they actually took the initiative to reach out to Graffiti Park, and, you know, I think that's the kind of leadership that the city manager really appreciates, and that's something that I certainly appreciate, when again, we combine art, hint, hint, with the things that we do, you know, here at the city of North Vegas. You can't go wrong when you combine art with the way our city functions. And that was last Thursday, February 10th. And then, just a couple days ago, we have, there is an organization, I forgot the main name of the organization, I should have written it down, but if you go to The Sweet Spot, if you just go to, if you Google, go to YouTube and just put in The Sweet Spot, North Las Vegas, it'll take you to a video that's produced by this organization, The Sweet Spot Nutrition Project, and I forget what the overall project is, I guess when they see me, they can go ahead and kick me or whatever, but they launched their after-school healthy food program at the James Clubhouse, the Boys and Girls Club, James Clubhouse, here in downtown North Las Vegas. Besides providing healthy food choices, the nutrition-based program is designed to educate the children and their families on the value of nutrition and also to provide nutrition. And I talked to the mayor, and they're coming to another school and another one in a ward near you, so thank you very much to them. Really, it's all these NGOs and nonprofit organizations that come by and they wrap their hands, they wrap their arms around our community, making it better. Thank you so very much.
Good report, Mayor Pro Tem Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just something to add to, Councilman Barone mentioned the Elks Club, and I'm looking forward to being a member over there. You know, that's in Ward 1, am I correct? I think it would be great if sometime in the future, we have the Elks Club, those officers and all come over here and recognize them, because that organization is the only one on a regular basis, yearly basis, that recognizes our police officers and our firefighters and awards them a certificate of appreciation and then provides everybody a little homemade dinner over there. So, you know, again, that would be up to you, but I would support something like that. I just want to mention very briefly, but I think it's important, and we all saw this on the TV, at least I know I did, there was a fire over here in North Las Vegas, and of course, our, and I say it on almost every council meeting, if you have an opportunity, you can't find better firefighters or police officers than we have over here in North Las Vegas. And this was yet another example of an officer, Scott Saltcroft, bringing an animal, a German shepherd, back to life. While the firefighters put out the fire at the home, he was able to go in there and bring this animal out and resuscitate this German shepherd, and it's an amazing thing. You know, the officer is a canine himself, canine officer, but you could see just how happy Alexandria was, I think it was Alexandria, you know, to stand up there, and if I'm not mistaken, she was licking his nose, and I would too if you brought me back to life. But, you know, I think that's another example of something that our officers do that is not within their job description, but yet they take it upon themselves to do some very good things for the community and of course for our animals, so thank you, Mayor.
That's interesting. Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Yesterday, I had a fun opportunity to attend a great activity at Silver Mesa Rec Center, our senior program. We have a really robust senior program, several dozen elderly North Las Vegas residents come and recreate and have fun at our senior center. We had a day-after Valentine's Day sweetheart luncheon, so I want to thank Cass and Doug from our Parks and Rec Department for being there. Also, Nino and a few of the others from our Fire Department came and brought candy. There was lots of great food and fun discussion. We just have a really awesome program, super grateful that we are committed to the senior residents. As City Council members, we represent North Las Vegas and its residents on regional boards in our area, so we make sure that our community is served appropriately in these regional aspects. And last Thursday, I had the opportunity to attend a welcome ceremony for the new Executive Director at the Housing Authority, Mr. Lewis Jordan, that we hired. I represent North Las Vegas on that board, and the former chair, and I'm super excited for this new gentleman to come. And affordable housing is a critical issue and access to affordable housing, and so I'm looking forward to the good work that that organization can do in North Las Vegas. And lastly, on March 5th, there will be a park cleanup partnered with Get Outdoors Nevada at Flores Park on Allen, just south of Craig Road, and look forward to anyone who wants to come out and pull weeds and make the park a little prettier. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gornes-Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Myself, along with the mayor and Councilman Barone, attended a candlelight vigil last Sunday for those nine crash victims, and just so we could just offer words of comfort and let them know that this community still has them in our hearts. And out of the tragic, one good came, one thing that was good that came out of it is Tiffany May. We, I don't know if you all realize it, but we were able to FaceTime with her so she could be a part of the ceremony, and I spoke with her and her mother, and she's just thankful, grateful, and she's just taking it one day at a time, so we just want to continue to keep her in our prayers as well as the family. And I won't mention, we had our Lunch and Learn, Councilwoman Barone already mentioned that. On Councilman Barone's behalf, I got to attend the grand opening of Dunkin' Donuts in Ward 1, and I had the greatest time. I think I'm just coughied out, so. So it was a great, fantastic grand opening, and I was just glad, they donated $100 to the Boys and Girls Club here in North Las Vegas to assist them with their efforts down there. And then lastly, we do have another park cleanup, and that is this Saturday at Desert Horizons Park, and it's also hosted by Get Outdoors Nevada, so if you aren't busy this Saturday from 9 to 11, please join us at Desert Horizon Park. That's right there on Simmons and Gallin.
You guys are sure busy in your districts. Way to go, your wards, I should say. We are now going to move on to the first public forum. This is time set aside for comment on posted agenda items, excluding the public hearing items, which should be heard separately. So if you want to speak on any items on today's agenda, now is that time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards for the posted agenda items or phone callers right now?
No, sir.
We do not? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come up right now and visit with the council? Saying none, and we will close the public forum. Moving on to the agenda.
Item 1, approve City Council's regular meeting agenda for February 16th, 2022. Mayor and Council, item 15 on the business portion of the agenda has been moved to the consent agenda. Staff recommends approval of the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on the agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion. Move to approve? We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, the consent agenda consists of items 2 through 8, and now with the addition of item 15 from the business portion of the agenda, and it's our recommendation to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you. So we are pushing 15 on to the consent agenda, so the chair will take a motion unless there's any comments or questions to accept the approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Move for approval as amended. Oh, move for approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you very much. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Set future public hearing dates. Madam City Clerk, I direct you to set the hearing dates as necessary.
Yes, Mayor, so noted.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the public hearings.
Item 10, ratify the North Las Vegas Police Supervisor Association Collective Bargaining Agreement for the Correction Supervisors for the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Mayor and Council, pursuant to NRS, I just wanted to read a couple items into the record. First of all, similar to all other bargaining agreements, this agreement is a three-year term that ends on June 30th, 2024. This agreement is expected to cost the city $158,000 over the three-year period, $65,000 in year 1, $46,000 in year 2, and $47,000 in year 3. The agreement is for the same COLA and lump sum payments as the other bargaining groups, namely $2.75 in year 1 with a $2,500 lump sum. The COLAs in future years are limited to CPI index with a cap of 3 and a floor of 2%. Other items include changes to ADP Pay Uniform Allowance and the removal of top and bottom steps of the wage scale. I want to thank Wilson Engel and the HR team for the efforts that they've put forward in getting this done. This now concludes our final outstanding contract with all of our employees, so we won't be back at the table again until, for a couple years.
Thank you very much. Good report. I'm gonna open up the public hearing right now. Are there any blue cards, comments, or is anybody on the phone, or is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forth right now on item 10 to ratify the North Las Vegas Police Supervisor Association Collective Bargaining Agreement?
So we have no blue cards.
I see no one coming forth, so we will close the public hearing. A call for motion to ratify the collective bargaining agreement for the correction supervisors.
Yeah, Mayor, just a quick comment, of course, you know, I truly believe we have the best police force in the state of Nevada. I was told by kind of a semi-legendary former supervisor that he felt because of the hires that we've had in the last five years, so that we have definitely the best police department bar none. But with that, it comes a lot of supervision, there comes a lot of leadership that needs to be provided for all these young officers. I am quite confident that in the future, as we hire new people here for our city, they will have that fantastic leadership. I see one of our supervisors in the back there, Captain Hyde. I'd like to just tell him I really appreciate it, and it's an honor to actually make this motion to approve.
Thank you very much. Anyone else saying none? Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor and Council, item number 11, approve Vacation 20-21, sink apartments for applicant NVEP 35 LLC to vacate a portion of public right-of-way located south of Elkhorn Road and west of Aliante Parkway in conjunction with development of the property.
Thank you very much. We're gonna open up the public hearing. Welcome, sir, we're opening up the public hearing, and I have a blue card for item number 11. Mr. Armstrong Jeffrey?
That is correct.
Welcome this evening to us.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Jeffrey Armstrong, 2727 South Rainbow. Here representing the applicant, we concur with staff recommendations and respectfully request your approval.
Wait, wait, Mr. Jeffrey, for some reason, you have a soft voice, or we're just not hearing up here today. We need a longer microphone stand for these tall guys can speak into it, or is not...
Is this better?
Oh, there you go. We need a...
Just pull it forward.
Okay, we're ready to go now.
Okay, thank you. My apologies. My name is Jeffrey Armstrong, 2727 South Rainbow. Here representing the applicant, we concur with staff recommendations and respectfully request your approval. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions to this? Saying none? You've done good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to the council on this item? Saying none, then we'll close the public comment, and the chair will take a motion.
Mayor Lee, I'd like to make a motion to approve VAC 20-2021.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Mayor, Council, item 12, approve ZN 27-2021 and pass and adopt ordinance number 3106, an ordinance related to zoning reclassifying approximately 32.92 plus or minus acres from the MPC RZ10 Master Plan Community Residential up to 10 dwelling units to the acre district and an MPC Muz Master Plan Community Mixed Use Zone District to PCD Plan Community Development District. ZN 27-2021, Regal Revere at Tulie Springs for property located at the northwest corner of Revere Street in Clark County 215 and providing for other matters property related there too.
Thank you, Director Jordan. We're gonna open the public hearing now and ask the city clerk if there's any blue... I have a blue card for Dade Rose. Please, Dade, come up, and if there's anybody else on the phone or written comments, I'd like to know now, or is there none?
No other, sir.
All right, so, Dade, don't blow this, you might get this.
I'll try, Mayor. Thank you, council members, thank you for letting me come to be with you. I'm here on behalf of Regal Tulie Springs. We're looking forward to this project and appreciate the planning staff support as well as the planning commissions. I had a very nice visit with Councilman Churchill during our neighborhood meeting, and again, thank you for your time. I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Is it Dale or Dade?
Dade, like the county in Florida.
Okay, that's good. I just want to make sure it's for the record proper, that's a beautiful name. Any comments or questions? If not, I'll turn this over to Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, I appreciated the meeting and it was very positive, so I have absolutely no problem approving ZN 27-2021.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Thank you very much.
Mayor, Council, item 13, approve ZN 28-2021 and pass and adopt ordinance number 3107, an ordinance related to zoning reclassifying approximately 2.09 plus or minus acres from a PUD Plan Unit Development District to a PUD PAD Plan Unit Development, Planned Infield Development District. ZN 28-2021, Conway and Washburn, consisting of a 13-lot single-family subdivision for property located at the southeast corner of Washburn Road and Conway Street and providing for other matters property related there too.
Thank you very much, Director Jordan, once again. I'm gonna open up the public hearing and ask the clerk if I have a blue card, if there's any other blue cards, written comments, or callers on the phone.
No, sir.
We don't. So I have a very famous man coming forth, Mr. Jeremiah Johnson. That is a good name to me. I like that movie, Jeremiah.
Redford's a great actor. Obviously, it's Jeremiah Johnson from Tanny Engineering on behalf of the client, Charant Properties. We agree with all staffs... We agree with all staff's conditions for approval. We have met with the neighbors, the councilmen as well, and planning to get this project off the ground. So I'm looking forward to your approval and here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to come speak on this issue? Once again, we're going to close the public comment now and turn this over to Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeremiah. Again, with item number 13, I'll be happy to approve ZN-28-2021.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Mr. Johnson, I don't know if too many people have saw that show Jeremiah Johnson, but that's a great movie. And Councilman Black hadn't heard about it, but.
When we do movies in the park?
Huh?
You should do, play it next time we do movies in the park. Get everyone out.
Good for you. What a nice name to have. Moving on?
Item number 14, conduct public hearing and adopt resolution number 2688, a resolution of the City Council of the City of North Las Vegas, Nevada, augmenting the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget.
Thank you, welcome. How are you doing today?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. I'm here to present Resolution 2688, which is an augmentation of the budget. You should have a presentation. Slides two and three are customary slides to give you the NRS sites as to why we do an augmentation. Slide three is the reasons for augmentations. We'll move to slide four, which is a history, a five-year history of the augmentations for the city of North Las Vegas. The detail of this particular augmentation on slide five is a $35 million increase to the budget, showing a final amended budget of $852.9 million. It's made up of the summary items on page six. Most of these items you're familiar with, carryovers, increases, developer funds. I want to point out two items on that. The first one is the cost of living adjustment in the budget of $5.5 million, which has not been in the budget for the last few years. And down a reduction, a reverse of a duplicate transfer of $4.2 million, which is unusual. We had a duplicate when we created the budget. We had an item that was carried over and budgeted, so we corrected that adjustment. Slide seven shows the detail of everything by fund that we're required to show you. If you have any questions, I'm willing to take any, if any questions that you may have, and with that, ask for your approval of Resolution 2688 to amend the budget.
Yeah, I do have a question on the augmentation. When we get federal funds in, and maybe the city manager on this too, we get federal funds, COVID funds and a lot of that, a lot of that kind of stuff, does it go into a general fund account or does it stay off to itself? And then the augmentation takes back, if it reverts back to the federal government? Or how does that work?
It depends on the reason for the money. It doesn't always go into the general fund. It may go into a different fund that's specific to whatever the funds are for. The funds are spent in the case of cares, in the case of the ones that we've got from the federal government. We still have those, they're being spent and being, we're asking for reimbursement from the government as we spend them.
So will there be a reversion? Or are you guys thinking we'll be about flat on that? Do you know on the federal dollars received?
At this point on cares, we have submitted the entire amount for cares, which is just under $24, $20 million, $4 million. The others, we're just beginning to spend on, and so we haven't asked for any reimbursements yet on those other major federal funds.
Okay, I see our finance director come up. Will, did you want to pipe in on that? I'm just curious about mixing the federal funds with the city funds.
Yes, we are very careful to track expenses as required by our federal funds. For example, with cares, it did not go into the general fund. We have a special revenue fund for that and we're tracking all costs separately for cares and ARPA and ERAP and all these other federal programs that come out. And when you're asking, when we augment the budget at the end of the year for anything that wasn't budgeted for, oftentimes we get permission and we get these funds mid-year. We will include that in either mid-year or end-of-year augmentation. So in our year-end augmentation, you will probably see stuff for cares and ARPA. Does that make sense?
So do they get swept out one day? You just send them back or?
For example, we got 23 points, I believe it's $8 million for cares. We tracked all of those expenses separately outside of the general operations of the government. As we spent that money out in the community, as we said we would as a city management, all those costs were tracked separately. We're not co-mingled with our other expenses so that we could track the revenues and expenses separately outside of the general fund. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so then you take, and you're then the federal government, what happened, know what happened to their funds, right?
Correct. We have all, lots of reporting requirements.
Yeah, I just know when we first got here, we weren't following a lot of the directions eight years ago, you know, with some of the funds that we were getting, we were getting threatened, you know, by the federal government to report better.
I appreciate that. One comment I would like to make is when we just did our year-end audit, we had zero findings when it came to our federal expenditures. So this was our first year in a while that we haven't had a single finding on our federal expenditures.
Thank you very much. I know we've got a Cracker Jack team here, but there might be some other questions. Any other questions, city council? I think everybody else thinks you did a great job. So anybody like to come up and talk about the augmentation budget? Come forward. I have no blue cards, callers on the phone or anything for that?
No, sir.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this and the chair will ask for a motion to adopt Resolution number 2688.
If there's no one else, I'd like to make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Item 15 was on the consent agenda. We are moving on to ordinances introduction only now.
Item number 16, introduce ordinance number 3111, amending ordinance number 3060 to amend Title II, Chapter 6, Section 020B of the North Las Vegas Municipal Code to set the term of the judge appointed to Department One and the terms of the successor judge to be elected at the 2022 municipal election and providing other matters property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Moving on to appointments.
Item number 17, appointment of 11 members of the newly established City of North Las Vegas Educational Advisory Committee by city council. Mayor and council, names of the members are Ursula Garvin, Oyaime Calvo, Courtney Davis, Eve Brier, Crystal Hershey, Johnny Ortega, Beverly Mathis, Stephanie Johnson, Fatima McGowan, Amelia Pablo Brazan, and Shirley Serrano. I feel like I should be giving them diplomas or something.
Yeah. No, no, I know this committee is ready to go to work. And before we vote, when will their first meeting be? And just a little bit about the committee, if you wouldn't mind?
Seraphin's on his way up. As you recall, council and mayor, this was an item that we brought last week, but, or last council meeting, but didn't have the names. So I know that they're glad to get these names read in because they're ready to go. So Seraphin?
Thank you. I'm Seraphin Calvo, Director of Community Services and Engagement. The first committee meeting is scheduled for, special committee meeting for February the 28th, 5:00 PM.
Thank you. And you're getting everything ready and now the agenda? I mean, just, will they elect a chairman among themselves? Just a little bit about forming the committee.
That's correct. So the day of the first meeting, there will be an election for officers for chair and vice chair during the first meeting. That would be on the 28th of February.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council at this time? Seeing none on either side? So the chair will take a motion to appoint the lower members of the Education Advisory Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve item 17.
We have a motion? Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to city managers' report.
Mayor and council, thank you. I do not have anything to report at this time.
Great. So now we're going to move on to the second public forum. Now is the time set aside for the public to speak on issues that not, that were not on the agenda. But we are within the jurisdiction and control of the city council. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Remember, no items raised during the second public forum will be deliberated or acted upon by the city council. However, the items discussed may be referred to the city manager or other city staff or action by the city council later date. Madam City Clerk, I see you have one blue card.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Alpert, would you like to please come up? It's nice to see you again, Jeff.
Good afternoon. For the record, Jeff Alpert, 3828 Fusiler Drive, North Las Vegas. It's good to be back. And I would like the assistance, if I could, of city staff or clerk to pass out my latest book. I brought a free copy for city council and mayor and our city manager. And I'll tell you about it. As you might recall, my first book was on Kyle Ranch. My second book was on the history of North Las Vegas and all its mayors. I'm looking forward now with COVID easing up to get out there and publicize it further. And during the last 18, 20 months with COVID keeping me indoors a lot, I started on my third project. And the book you just got is called The Early Pioneers of Las Vegas. I spent hundreds and hundreds of hours doing research. I spent, two summers ago, I spent almost the entire summer reading 25 years' worth of the Las Vegas Age that's on the internet, every issue, looking for stories about the pioneers that I picked out to investigate. Some of these people have never had anything written about them, so I would be the first one to have come up with information about them. We're talking about merchants, builders, early mayors, barbers, dentists, judges, and pharmacists. So I hope you enjoy the book. And we all have to keep in mind, when North Las Vegas started up in 1919, during the 1920s, as people moved into North Las Vegas, there were almost no stores, no schools, and people relied heavily on going into downtown Fremont Street and Main Street to do their shopping and to send their children to schools. So I'm hoping members of the council, our city manager, read this book, familiarize themselves with it, because you're never going to know when some of the information you hear is going to come in handy. And because this book is about Las Vegas, I'm dedicating the profits on this book to the Friends of the State Museum. And they're going to work with me and get the word out about this book and try to make some sales happen. And over the last four weeks, since I received 500 copies that I self-published, I've gone to two commission meetings in Las Vegas. Las Vegas is a little bit ahead of us in terms of history. They have a Historic Preservation Commission that the mayor leads, and they also have a Centennial Commission as well. And I gave all the commissioners there and the mayor copies. And then I went to the county commissioners. I gave Marilyn, Kirkpatrick, and the whole gang there free copies, also the county clerk, the county manager. And then I went last week to the Las Vegas City Council Meeting. The mayor already had a copy, but all the other council members got a copy as well, the city clerk and the city manager. So there's a lot of free copies out there floating around. Publicize the book. And if you know people that want to buy it, they're available at the gift shop at Springs Preserve and the gift shop in the State Museum. And also for me, my email address is on the title page.
Now, Jeff, we don't mind sharing your intellect with the whole county, but you're our North Las Vegas historian. Don't ever forget that's your title, okay?
I'll remember that.
All right, brother. Thank you so much.